I can, yes, I can.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Council Joyner.
Here.
Council Harris.
He should be participating.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Denton.
Here.
Council Pelham.
Here.
Council Holloway.
All right. At this time, is there a motion to allow Council Harris to participate remotely?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Council Denton and seconded by Council Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Council Harris, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from? And the reason why you're requesting to participate remotely?
I'm speaking from home, and it's for medical reasons.
All right, thank you. Roll call please.
Council Denton.
Yes.
Council Pelham.
Yes.
Council Holloway. Council Joyner.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore. Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the city manager, Dr. Manker.
Mayor Parton and members of city council, tonight we begin our budget discussion. You have your calendars with you in your budget packet, and you also have the first session of the revenue budget, and so the idea to this is that every budget meeting that you bring back this notebook, and we will give, you know, you can bill upon each presentation until we have a final budget book. Tonight, we will discuss the revenue, and a little change to this year's presentation. We are going to follow best practices, and return back to the finance director presenting the budget revenues and the expense portion, and then I will present the proposed budget when we get to that in April the first.
Okay.
So with that said, I will turn it over to our interim CFO, Russ Branson, and he will kick us off with the revenue presentation.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Point of order, as far as the agenda says at the roll call, there are reports of city manager, is this what we're doing, are we following this agenda?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
The reports of the city manager, it's a different format tonight. It's like the end of our meeting, I guess we didn't finish the other night. Are we gonna do that, or we gonna?
No ma'am, there's no reports, this is just the outline. Next time, we'll make notes to just remove that from the agenda, but there, as you can, as you notice, there's no item there to discuss, it's left blank.
Yeah, I know it is, but so we need to make a motion to change the agenda to exclude those items since it's printed for the public.
Okay.
If something was anticipated, we're not gonna talk about it, make such a motion to delete reports of those four areas, and start with the budget review. I don't even see that.
She's amending the agenda.
She's amending the agenda.
So your motion is to amend the agenda, to remove everything except the budget work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
My second now.
Okay. Motion's been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Council Denton.
Yes.
Council Pelham.
Yeah.
Council Joyner.
Yes.
Council Harris. Council Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore. Motion passes six to zero.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had muted myself and I was talking to myself. Yes.
Thank you, Council Harris. Go ahead, Mr. Branson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, it's good to be here with you tonight. So a few things, I'm gonna talk about the revenues tonight, we'll talk about expenses next week, and so what we're gonna, what we're gonna go through is a fairly high-level discussion, but it give you, it gives you a lot of detail, but in a way, I think you can understand it, you're used at this point, I think, sometimes having the huge binder of the detail, which is very difficult to read, and you'll have all this at the end, the detail will be, obviously be available to you, but we're gonna look at the revenues at a high level, see what we have, what we think we have available next week, in fact, we can go to the next slide. And next week, we'll talk about expenses. So, in terms of how I'm gonna, how I'm gonna talk about revenues, revenues come to us in kind of different forms, right? So, one, we have general government, and you can see all the, all the departments listed there under general government, that we talk about what revenues kind of come into there. General fund, we'll talk about specifically, and we'll also talk about enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are, you know, so general fund and general government is primarily taxes and user charges and state and federal revenues. Enterprise funds are primarily user charges, so we'll look at, we'll look at those, and that has a different characteristic of how revenues come in and how we set the budget. Public services, which I'm gonna change to health and welfare, just, that's a better, it's a better term, but that's what, that's the health and welfare, what I've called here, public services, so we'll talk about where the revenue's coming from there, and then schools, how schools is funded, and actually, where we don't have schools, we'll talk about school funding there as well. So that's the, kind of, what we'll talk about in those general areas, and these are the different departments at the city funds that would be under those. Next slide. So, who makes revenue forecasts? So, some of them, it's, you know, when we see all this revenue tonight, taxes, which is a major portion of our general fund, really, general fund and debt, those are, there's two sources of those tax revenue forecasts, one is the assessor, our former assessor made this forecast before she left, at the beginning of February, so that comes from the assessor. All the other, tax, mostly other tax revenue is gonna come from our commissioner of revenue, and we have members of our commissioner of revenue office here tonight, if you, to answer any questions and to provide any context as we go through that. State and federal revenue is gonna come from the departments, what the departments know they're getting, what the, you know, schools is told by the state government what they're gonna give them and the federal government, so it comes from those departments. User charges are estimated by the departments in terms of what they're going out and doing, and specifically for, by our enterprise departments, and then, you know, other charges, there's some by the budget staff will make some, and, you know, finance department makes some, especially as it relates to transfers, and then grants are put in when we have the money, right? So we're not, we're not looking forward for grants, saying, oh, we think we're gonna get $5 million for this, we just include grants in the budget when we actually have those grants, they've been, they've been ended. A couple, so, next, Brittany. A couple, some important context, you know, revenue is great to know, but it only really gets its meaning when we compare it against expenses, and so we will have some, we're, you know, when we talk next week, I'll bring in this revenue discussion along with the expense discussion, because that's when we start looking at, do we have enough money to do what we want to do, and if, and if not, and where not, you know, what then? So that, that won't happen tonight, but that'll start happening next week. We'll, we're still in the process of, you know, saying, okay, how can we get what we need and where we need it? So it's, you know, this is still an actively ongoing process as we're talking to you about this. You know, so in that event, you know, revenues may change as we, we get more information, or if there's any updates, right, or anything new comes in, we'll, we'll make those changes as we go through. For example, we don't know state revenues for the schools yet. Schools are gonna be here on the 28th to talk about their kind of process, but we probably won't have those revenues till at least mid-April, so we'll, but we're, we'll talk about what we've set aside, what we're looking at for providing to the schools for the city side of that. And, as I mentioned, you know, if revenues are insufficient, we'll have to have a discussion about, you know, what, what do we do? What do we fund, what don't we fund? And I'll talk tonight, as we go through, opportunities that we've talked about before of if we were to increase tax rates, what additional revenue would that come? So this is, you know, this is just more information for you, and I think that information doesn't help as much tonight as it will help next week when we start talking about expenses, you know, what we can or can't do, what additional money we might need, or, you know, so the question is always, is there a way to get more money in, raise taxes primarily right now, or change, you know, user charges for, on the enterprise side? Or, or do we reduce expenses, right? What, what don't we fund? Those are kind of the two, the two things we have to balance as we're trying to balance a budget, and we're not a city, I, I worked for a city that every year you had more money, right, than you could spend it on, and so, well, what do we do with that? You know, that's, which is, you don't have that problem, you have, you know, a problem of, we don't have quite enough money to do all the things we need to do, so, you know, so now what do we do, right? So it's increase revenues, or decide what you're not gonna fund, are kind of those two lovers. So, we'll start that conversation more next week. So, next slide. Okay, so sources of revenues. This just tells us that the primary source, you know, the different sources of revenue is citywide, so where our, where our money comes from, this includes money that comes through the city for schools, and so you can see that, that's the biggest chunk, which is, you know, total state and federal funding, and state and federal funding is, is primarily about $59 million, or whatever, you know, fifty, it says 53, I think it's gonna be higher, it's higher than that for, this year, for school funding, and then we have a lot of state and federal funding for our health and welfare, public services. General fund is primarily made up of taxes, so that, the taxes that come in are gonna fund general fund, and some of them go for debt service, so it's specifically lodging tax and food taxes go to the debt service fund, to help, help fund debt service. And then, we have user charges is the last really big set, and that's, again, primarily is coming through enterprise funds, where the biggest amount of user charges are. So we have three kind of general pots, so the fourth one up there is, I think, debt service? I, you know, I can't see that, it's, it's not as big as I'd hoped it would be, but anyway. But that is the, you know, those are the kind of, the general areas of where revenue comes for the city, and then if we go to the next one. Next, yeah. Okay, so this is, you know, how, how revenues are applied, and I have to ask somebody, do you have a copy of my, I'm sorry?
No.
This is my not planning well enough, 'cause I thought I could read that better. Thank you. So, okay, so this is, you know, how revenues are applied, now we're talking about, you know, the different departments, so we see they come from, you know, they come from three major sources with kind of, you know, some other revenues coming here or there from different things, but revenues are applied, you see, again, schools, if you look at the total budget for the city, and all the money that comes through and out, schools is the largest percentage, you know, over a third of the money that comes in through the city goes to schools. General fund revenue is 25% of, of the total revenue. Now, this is, at this point, when I look, when I tell you where, you know, where the money comes, money comes into the general fund, we'll talk about this in a minute, transfers. Money comes into the general fund through all its various sources, and then we transfer out 13.8 million to schools. So this little pie right here is after the money's been transferred out to the schools, right? So recreation, which is like 1% of the revenue, recreation, after we get this, this budget done, starting in next year, we're gonna merge recreation back into the general fund, because as you'll see later, we talked about it, it's mostly general fund revenue anyway, but now it's recreation is a separate little fund we'll talk about. But water and sewer there on the, the left side of that graph, you know, show that that's about 20, you know, 23% in combined, and those are primarily user charges that go in there, and then we have, you know, monies that come in for social services, refus, the children's services, and lots of, lots of other things. So, that's just us, just, you know, where our money comes in, and kind of where our money goes, how are we using that for everything we're doing? Okay, next, next slide, which is items to be aware of, and we talked about one. As you, as you read our budget, and as you understand what happens in the budget, and these are, and we're gonna, this will be explicit in our budget this year, the first is transfers, right? So money comes into different funds, especially the general fund, we get money that is general fund money that comes in, and then we transfer some of it out. We're gonna, we'll talk late, towards the end of the presentation, I'll talk exactly about where those transfers go, we talked about one, which is schools, but that means that, you know, it's money that we could use for other sources, but we're using it for these different things, and so it gets complicated a little bit when you're looking at the budget, especially if those transfers are internal, so money comes into the general fund, we transfer some to debt service, you know, money comes into the general fund, we transfer some to recreation, so if you, if you look at, if you add everything together, sometimes it's a little double counted, right? Because we have, sometimes it shows up like as an expense, the recreational shows as an expense in general fund, and it'll show up as in a revenue in the recreation fund. So it's, so we should, one of the things I always look at in a budget is, how is the money moving around, right? Where are the transfers? Not good or bad, it's just, you know, it's, it's something to pay attention to when you look at our budget, we'll specifically call those out in our budget document, we'll talk a little about that tonight as well. The others, use of surplus, we've, we've talked about this a little, use of surplus, it doesn't show up in our budgeting for this year, but when we look at some comparisons to last year, you'll see use of surplus, and what that means is, is that sometime after the budget, the way, the way your budget ordinance has read, is that if you, if we budgeted capital, we budgeted something in this year's budget that we didn't do, right, and specifically capital is what it says in the ordinance, that capital will automatically be transferred to the next year, without a, that's, without a separate action, the action of doing that occurred when you adopted your budget ordinance, and so we move both the expense, and it's assumed that you have money to move with that as well, and as we know, we're still a little murky on where all the money, right, we know how much we have in the bank, we don't know what funds it belongs to, and so we're working not to do that unless you have an active, if you have, if you're in contract and halfway through a project, we'll carry that over, but projects that aren't funded, we're gonna say, you know what, you gotta come back and ask for that when you need it, and when you're ready to go. So, but, so use of surplus, we're trying to limit, severely limit this year, because we really are concerned about our cash flow and total cash, and we'll have a better, I think by the end of the summer, we'll have a much better view of what that is, and be able to make some good, better decisions about that. So if you go to four, four to slide nine. Okay, so I wanna talk about the general fund, specifically, the general fund, and it's not the most important fund, but it's the fund you have the most control over, right? Because most of the revenues coming into the general fund are general revenues, they're taxes. In fact, 74% of the revenue in the general fund is tax revenue, and you can do anything you want, right, within, you know, within how, with your purview of services, in terms of how you spend those general fund monies. You can transfer it out to something else, you can use it, you know, for whatever programs you want, so it's the most flexible funding that we have is general fund, is general fund, is general fund revenues. We also have fees and charges that come in for programs, and like permits, and if there's anything we're charging, anything we're charging for, we chose in fees and part, fees and charges, but probably most of that in here is coming through the community development department and the plan, the planning department. We do get state and federal revenue in the general fund, as well as there's other miscellaneous revenue sources shown here. Now, I show, on the, on the right-hand side of this is a table, which, kind of breaking down, again, in major, major categories, but it's a, you know, looking at all the major revenues, we have all the taxes coming down here, which is about, again, 49 million, you can see how those have grown over the last two years, right, or since 23 through 25 forecast. A, a big shift in that was the FY '23 assessment, right? So that was a big jump in property taxes last year, but we're showing growth in other taxes this year as well, as you can see there. The other items, you know, fees and charges, state and federal revenue, other revenues have been, you know, have been fairly flat this year as opposed in, in last year, so we're not looking at a lot of growth over the past year, and at the bottom, that use of surplus, which is, we just talked about, right? So we don't have anything budgeted this year, but two years ago, and this is primarily the use of, that surplus is ARPA and, and CARES Act monies, right, in '23, and then some in 2024. So that was, again, looking back and taking monies we'd received earlier, and now are applying this fiscal year, so that's what use of surplus means. So if you look at, there's a, you know, the, the overall growth of expenses, or overall growth of revenue, on the general fund side, we've gone from 62 in '23 to 64 to '66, a fairly consistent growth in total, but '23 and '24, '23 especially and '24, we're using CARES Act money to get up to that, to get up to those levels. And what that means, how I read that, how I look at that, is that you've had one-time monies that increased your revenues to do programs that are no longer there, so thankfully, you've also had some growth in revenues, so you are seeing some continued growth in expenses because expenses are growing, right? Some of it we have control over, some of we don't, but expenses are growing, so you do have some, a little built-in growth here that's happening in your revenues. So that's an important thing to look at, it's not a huge amount of growth, but it's important to understand, as we go into the expense side, to see that we have some growth, but, you know, not a tremendous amount of growth, it's, it's about one and a half million dollars extra revenue is the current forecast against 24 revenues. So, why don't I stop there just for a second, if I, if I'm just gonna, you know, I don't, you can interrupt me a little if you have any questions, or we can wait to the end, I'll let, you know, Mayor, how you wanna do it.
I'd like for us to, you know, just keep going through, and then at the very end, let's ask the questions.
Great. Okay, so now I wanna break down, I'm, I wanna get into some history to show where things grow, 'cause I think this is helpful to look at, and specifically, we're gonna really dive into a lot of the tax revenues, which have the, again, the major impact on your general fund. On slide 10, we, this is total general fund revenues and what they've been over the, the last, you know, since I, I look back from 2018 through the forecast of '25, and you see a generally, you know, a general nice slope upwards with some, you know, again, big growth in '23, you did have monies come in in '21 for CARES Act, right, which then was used more in '23, so this is that carryover surplus, we got the money one year, we used it a different year, you had ARPA funding come in in '23, and then we had the growth in property taxes also in '23 and '24. So we've had this nice, you know, kind of a gentle upward slope in revenues, that's, that's generally a good trend. So let's look at where those have come from. So real estate taxes, and on, for the next several slides where we've discussed the opportunities to increase taxes, I do have the little piece on the left that we'll talk about after we talk about the taxes, but again, real estate taxes, where we haven't seen a rate increase in a number of years, what we do see is increases from reassessments. And so you get reassessments, which are, which are every two years, and you also have new development as it comes in, right, and reassessments from improvements that people done on properties, that also gets mixed in here, and you've seen, again, this gently, you know, kind of a gentle upward slope with a big jump in 20, 23, and then 24, with, or the '23 assessment, which affected primarily fiscal year '24, was a major jump for a lot of folks, and it increased our revenues. We're, at this point, the forecast from the recent treasurer was that we'll remain flat in our revenues, we could get, we could see a little more, right, but it's a, so it's a conservative estimate, but we don't have a reassessment this year, and then we talk about, on that, the chart on the left, right, which we talked about, maybe we consider an opportunity could be to go from 1.13 to 1.2. Oh, could you go forward, Brittany? Sorry. 1.13, from 1.13 to 1.2, and if we did that, that would generate approximately 1.4 million dollars of revenue, kind of, you know, moving forward. The other thing I put on here, the little red circle at the top, just to, for the taxes is, you know, real estate taxes, almost half of the tax revenue that the city gets, right? So it's a significant, important revenue source for all that the city does on a year-to-year basis. Okay, next slide, machinery and tools tax, this is about 20, just under 20% of, of total taxes, so again, machinery and tools tax and property tax, or real estate tax, which are collected at the same time, make up about 70% of our tax revenue, we get half roughly in December, half in June. So this is newer upgraded equipment in local businesses, right? So it's a tax on the equipment they could have, it's not, and it's not a building, or not land, right? So it's something that they could be, that can move, and it does move in and out, if a, if a big, you know, if, if a big industry goes, you're gonna lose not just real estate tax, but you lose machinery and tools tax, as those things will be taken with them, and you can see that that has been fairly, fairly stable, we're looking at a little uptick tick this year, and that's the one, this is where, if there's ever, if there's a question on that, I've asked these fine ladies to come and talk about it, because I did not do this estimate, or this forecast. But again, we've talked about if we go up a half percent there, and I know this is just increased a couple of years ago, so this, these are opportunities we have, that could generate about another 1.3 million dollars of revenue. All right, next slide. Personal property tax, for, for most people, they, this tax is like the tax on your vehicle, other kind of personal property like that. Tangent personal property, for example, vehicles, the current rate is 3.5, we show, you know, what would go up to four, and again, personal property tax has increased the last '23 and '24, about the same, but there's an increase, and there's another jump coming up here in, in '25, so it's projected to give us a little more revenue than it has, and personal property tax is 14.4% of all taxes. Next slide, public services corporation tax, and this, this is actually set by the state corporation commission, so it's not something that the city has control over, and it kind of, you know, goes up and down, so this is, you know, public corporations in the city, including electric, gas, telecommunications, and water companies, and this is up and down, but it's expected to be a little up this year with our forecast. Now I just wanna- And I just want to say, as we're talking about forecast versus actual, we're usually collecting about 97% of what we get. We, we have a pretty good track record of actually collecting what we have. We'll, we'll talk about that, as I noticed a question Mayor Parton had, which is on allowances for uncollected fees. We'll talk about that as part of this as well. But this is going down, you know, this is about 10% of our revenue. So all of these are important, but, you know, somewhat a little lesser degree. Local sales tax, 5.6% of our revenue. This is one, right now, we, we do not have the option to increase. There is a bill out there that could allow you to increase sales tax for schools, but it's not, it's not, so we'll continue watching that. And the, you know, this clearly is, there's, it's local sales tax, right? So it's, it tends to be more volatile revenue source, and you can see that in the annual revenues of just what's, you know, what's going on in the economy, what's, you know, going on in the world. And it's kind of, you know, back in the middle. It's like it's almost on every, for some reason, on every other year, kind of, you know, up and down. I don't know why, but we're, we're kind of in the range of where we've been on local sales tax. And local sales tax, this is the one, we do get 1%. So when you, when you buy something somewhere, you get charged 5.3% of, of your taxable sale. The state gets 4.3, city gets 1%. Okay, so other local taxes, and we just kind of, this is one where I just put together a lot of different taxes, because they're about 6.7% of total taxes. So utility taxes, payment and lieu are pilots of taxes, and this, you get, we get this from industry for some things, like it comes through the, our, you know, for, our, for regional water has payment lieu. For folks who have benefits but don't actually pay taxes, they'll pay a pilot. Consumption taxes, railroad, recordation fees, food taxes, lodging taxes, those, those are all in here. And those are, but utility taxes and pilots comprise about 70% of total other local taxes. And those are, again, are on kind of, you know, they kind of go up and down based on what's going on in the economy in the city, but they're within a reasonable range. They're, you know, kind of in the mid-range of what they've been over the last few years projected. All right, so the last big piece for the general fund are non-tax revenues. And I've put these, because they're such a, they're a smaller portion of the total, I put them together, and you have on the bottom, you can kind of follow up on the bottom, the majority, this dark blue part of the bar, are user charges and fees. So that's the majority of non-tax revenues that the city gets in for the general fund. And then we have fines and forfeitures in the light blue. And you can see that user charges and fees have generally followed the economy, right? So in the pandemic, especially '21, those went down. They've started coming back up, and they've remained fairly, trending up, but remaining fairly stable. Fines and forfeitures, pretty stable. You know, use of money in property, that's, that'd be interest, that'd be if we leased anything or rented anything, that would show up as use of money in property. Grants, and that, obviously, that kind of goes up and down over the years. And we, what we're showing for '25, again, would be the portion that we know we're going to get, right? So that will probably expand during the years, we have more grant opportunities. Then we have the, then we have other, which is a small, not, actually not much in here. And then, again, you see use of, use of surplus in '24, and those were CARES Act, ARPA monies that were carried over, we've talked about before. And we don't have any of those programmed in '25. Okay, so next, next slide. And I, I have recreation, as I talked about, we're going to merge that back into general fund, so I have it in the general fund discussion part. And the, the blue, the blue bar is general fund money. So since the recreation fund now serves, kind of, serves as a separate fund, we transfer money from the general fund to the recreation fund, right? So it's using all those tax monies and everything else that we get anyway. Recreation also has user charges and fees, right? So for either rentals or programs that they run, you know, you, again, use of money in property would be the same kind of thing, where they rent out facilities and those kinds of things. And then they have other revenues that may come in during the year, donations, or grants, or things of that nature, that are more de minimis and not, we don't have a lot projected for next year at this time. But that, again, their funding has generally been trending up, right? It's not huge, but it's a, you know, it's generally been an upward, upward slant. Okay, the next slide. General fund transfers. So this is what we wanted to talk about, yeah, you can see there, so the, the monies that come in. So when I talk about general fund transfers, that means these are primarily going to be tax revenues we're transferring, right? Because charges and fees are typically for specific services and grants, and state and federal monies are specific things we're doing. So these are primarily, we're transferring out taxes, if you, even though it's not a, we're not tracking the dollars like that. We're assuming that we're going to remain steady with the schools next year, of what we've been this year and last year, which is 13.58 million. That is about average, maybe a little below. We've had years in the past, you know, eight years where you've been up over 14 million, but usually that's with the initial 12 and a half million, and then adding more on as you go through the year. And we're saying, no, here's what we're going to give you, you know, figure it out, right, with, with your budget. And as I mentioned before, they don't know their state funding probably until at least April 15th, because that's when the governor's, yeah, veto period ends. And, and then they still may not know if, then, depending on what exactly has been vetoed with the schools. And there's a lot of, I guess, a lot of battling over schools with Republican governor and a Democratic legislature that have different ideas about what to do with the money. So we might be in a little bit of limbo. Last year was October, I think, before they found out. They're going to be in a little bit of a limbo. We're trying to get ourselves out of the limbo and say, here's what we're going to give you. Recreation is about $2 million, gets transferred, you know, public services, and we'll, we'll see this exactly, what programs, how this gets to programs, but that's a little over 2 million that get transferred out. Let's say health and welfare is what I'm going to recall this. We transfer 1.2 million into debt service for our debt service fund, and that is, you know, primarily actually to also fund schools. And I want to try to represent this, when we say we're giving 13.8 million to schools, I just want to make, I want to clarify, we also pay schools debt service, which is about 1.8 million dollars. Now, that's going to be going down in a couple of years, but those two things together. So I, when I talk about expenses, I, and I hold, I'm going to put, now, I'm reminding myself right now, I'm going to put those two things together, because we talk about the 13.58, but it's really 13.58 plus, right, the debt service. So we, we're giving more to the schools than just that 13.58. And then insurance, other funds, that's the, work, stuff that's, that is generated outs, you know, or the fund lives outside, and the, and the general fund pays that money. And this is, this is a thing, as a broader comment to, you know, revenues and who should pay that. There's not a whole lot that goes out from the general fund to other funds, but this is one, to make sure that maybe all the funds should pay, we probably need another cost allocation plan at some point, that tells us how to, how to, how to share these costs equitably throughout the city departments. So then I do, and then I show the dollars for the transfers, and the fact that there's about 66 and a half million dollars that come into the general fund that we're projecting for this year, that are going to come into the general fund. 20 million of those dollars then go out, right, for these other purposes. So the general fund is left for those general fund services with about 46 million dollars. If that makes sense, right? So just to, this is why, it's helpful to understand, we, and it's because of the way we, the way we talk about things, I'll talk about, the general fund is 66.5 million dollars. And yet, you know, and we'll show, there's transfers going out, but if you, you know, even I, I have to remind myself, no, it's, it's not 66 million dollars of service in the general fund, it's really 46 with other services going out. In this case, the biggest one being schools, which is a part of what Virginia communities The other thing I want to talk about before we move on to enterprise funds and the general fund is general fact, general fund tax allowances. So we can go on to the next slide. So within our budget, and we talked, I talked about, there's a pretty, and I, and I went back and looked at all this, there's a really good track record of what we're actually collecting, pretty close to what we've budgeted. I think there's about a 3%, you know, maybe a 3% loss, and that can be, that can come from people not paying, right, paying late, can also come from we're just off in our, in our forecast, right? But if we're, 3% is a pretty good number with, 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 for all of that. But to make sure that we're kind of not over-budgeting, not spending more that's coming in, we do have allowances. Now, partly, we have supplements and abatements that are, you know, that we do get some funding back from, from the state. But, so those show here for real estate and personal property, for machine and tools, that this, these are amounts that are in our, in our budget, you'll see in our budget as kind of neg, you know, they're, the money comes in, but then we reduce the money by these amounts for supplements and abatements for real estate and machinery and tools. And then we have allowances for uncollected revenues in real estate and personal property tax that total a little over 1.6 million dollars, right? So, which is about 3.3% of total rev, tax revenue for those things. And so it's a way of, again, trying to hold back, being, having, having some conservativeness built in, and that's, you know, again, with, we have very good forecasts on those things, typically. But we, you know, they can forecast what it should be, or what is, we're, we're going to build, but not necessarily what everybody pays. Fairly high payment rates, but we, this is something that we do have built in our revenue. So we see our revenue forecasts and our, that this, this is a separate line in there as well, to kind of reduce those back a little. And that, that kind of helps, especially if there's any kind of economic disruption where people may be late in paying. Now, eventually, we do get all this money, right, for the most part. But we have to, we're more concerned with what money we're getting next year to fund, it doesn't help us to get money a year or two later for expenses that are happening in the next year. Okay, so that's the general fund and taxes and all those that come in. Those are things we have the most control over, both in rates we set, as well as how we use the money. Now, when we move to water, I'm going to talk about enterprise funds, let's start with water renewal. So water renewal is a fee-funded or user-charge funded enterprise. The users for this primarily are the four industry partners, the, and the city. And also, and the city means city sewer, right? So it's city domestic sewer flow that comes in. So it's not city general fund, it's a city sewer fund that is a customer of the water renewal. And so we have, you know, charges to the industry and city. And those charges are broken down in a few different categories. One is operations. So we said, here's our operations, here's what we're going to charge you for that. There's a very whole complex formula that's in the agreement between all the partners that sets that out very clearly, how you calculate that. There's a debt service portion, so they're paying, you know, we're all paying 100% of the debt service that's related to regional water. And then administrative, administrative fees are tacked on there as well. So the miscellaneous revenue, so that's the, this is the other piece, this is the complexion, we're, we're working all this out, and we're talking about this and how to do this, we'll be back talking to you. But beyond charges to industry, there's miscellaneous revenue, which is, also can be called mostly hauled waste or leachate, lots of different names for it. Primarily, it's leachate and hauled waste monies are in the miscellaneous revenue, and that primarily is used for capital, right? So that's the, that's what that, we're focusing that on. However, practically speaking, over the last several years, because we haven't, we haven't trued up all the payments, we've also used that miscellaneous revenue to help fund any kind of negatives in operations, which I think is great that you had it, you had that, it's there. So that's a whole separate conversation about all that, but those are the primary funding sources. We're charging the users for what they have. We have this miscellaneous revenue that we're saying we use for capital. If there's not enough money from those two sources to fund everything, then we go back to the users and say, hey, we need more money, right? So that is meant to be a fully self-sufficient fund. If we go to the next slide. We look at the user charges, you get this, again, historical view of where we've been, and what you're partly seeing here in FY '25 is a, is a, is a big jump, and that jump is primarily because we've included at this point, this is another thing I told, you know, some of these revenues are going to change. The commission is not view these revenues or the budget to kind of help form what they want to do. But we have, at this point, included as a charge to the industry and ourselves, the, a 9.2 million dollar capital budget that has been put forward by regional water. I think that's going to change. I think this will be adjusted, but this is what we have right now, because, one, I want to make sure everybody knows exactly what you need to have in that budget to fully fund the cost. And anything that's in our budget, any cost that's in our budget, I want to identify, especially if on our enterprise funds, that we're funding those expenses from the charges, the charges for service. And I'm okay with fine use and leachate once we have it, we just don't know exactly how much we'll get, right, until the year is done. And so you can see, and you can see, that's the miscellaneous revenue over to the right. You can see, you know, I don't know if I'd call it volatile, but it definitely is not, it's hard to predict, right? So a lot of this is based on the level of rainfall, and, you know, so it's weather-related, right? So lots of rain, there's lots of runoff from the, you know, yeah, from the solid waste facilities, who then have to, you know, get that together and bring it to be treated. Here, we make money then. So if it's a, if it's a low rain year, you don't get as much money. So far, this is just showing, this is showing budgeted amounts. In FY '25, we didn't, we budgeted, or FY '24, we budgeted a million, we've currently received about, this is actually actuals, I'm sorry, because we've currently received about 1.8 million through February, but, but it's been rainy recently, right? And so, and then it's, we have to bill that, and that takes, so you'll see that about eight, nine weeks later, that money will start coming in. So it'll be a little higher, but it's unpredictable. So we want to make sure, as we go through, to finally set this, this budget, that we're looking at, that we're definitely getting all our operations covered, and whatever's in capital, that before we build anything, we, either the industry has paid for it, including the city, so I say industry, but it means city too, or we have, or we have identified hauled waste miscellaneous revenues that can pay for it, right? So that's, and that's been a little unclear the last couple of years, we want to clarify that this year, and we'll, we'll be having discussions with the commission on that. So this is just preliminary where we are right now. Okay, next slide. Sewer refuges, sewer refuses and stormwater, these are our other three enterprise funds. And sewer is an interesting, interesting case right now. You can see, again, the, the blue bar for all of these is, is the user charges, and then there's some, you know, pilots on sewer, and there's other revenues that come in, there's use of money in property, and then on stormwater, we have some use of surplus, right? So last year, we had some money, it may have been ARPA monies that we brought in to do some stormwater projects. So let's talk about sewer revenues. They're down, right? They're projected to be down this year, and you can, you know, it's just shorter, it's down by about a million dollars on the revenue projection. And the reason for that is that we have two, two of our customers, which could be Prince George County and, I think, the jail. Maybe there's two, two major customers who have actively made improvements to reduce their sewer, their, their sewer char, their sewer flow. And so that is affecting the, the amount of money we expect to get from them this year. This is going to be an interesting discussion next week in terms of the expenses, so we're still working on this, because the need is, you know, the need for investment is much greater than we have from these revenues. So we're going to come in with a, a plan that is, what do we get for these revenues? And then how do we make additional investments? And investments primarily in upgrading the system so it continues operating. So that's where I talk about, I look at this, and I say, this is one that comes up for me, is like, ah, we have a lot of work here to do, right, a lot of discussion to have. So revenues are one side, adding the expenses on another side. Let's go down to stormwater. Stormwater is $4 a parcel right now, right, charged on their, these are all charged on utility bills for Charged on their, these are all charged on utility bills for the, these three items. And, and it's probably not enough. And so this is one where I, I don't have any specific, but I think you're going to have to look at, from what we're hearing from Public Works, that, yeah, what's needed for stormwater could require some changes there. And then refuse revenue is showing up. And I don't, I think this is showing what is needed to fund the system. And we're going to be back, we'll have to come back, we'll talk about this more next week when we talk about expenses. But you had, you've had some expenses here, and we, so there's both an additional, there's an additional need to increase rates here that we need to talk about separately. But, and that's to keep the refuse revenue, if we don't raise the rates, the general fund is subsidizing that service.
Right.
And, you know, it's not something we can afford to do. But rates are always tough. All right. So public services are health and welfare. So again, we have really three, three services, three funds that we have, social services, the Children's Service Act, and then healthy families, special welfare, we get money in there, but it's not actually a budgeted thing, but it is a fund. And then healthy families, which became a city department about two years ago. So I, I'm going to show them combined here, because I want to talk about just where all the money comes from, and then we'll look at each of these, the, the three major funds going on. The blue, again, is state, state and federal. When you get to '24 and '25, it's a blue and orange. Because we actually do get state and federal, but I think as I mentioned last week at a meeting, that the, over the years, the, the money comes, all the money comes in, even the federal money comes in through the state. The, they, they have a sheet that tells you what's what, but that hasn't been utilized to code the funds. And so the funds that come in, they've just all been coded as state funds. We're in the process of correcting this. And I, because '24 is the budget, we're not done yet, and '25 is the budget, we do budget those state and federal revenues. We just don't, they haven't been tracked, right? So we're going, we're getting those, we're changing that, we're getting them tracked. But that's why you're only seeing, seeing the federal revenues show up in the last two years. But so state and federal revenues, and those are going up, is projected for both this year and next year. The green is the, is the city transfers, and that is also going up a little in this next year for these. And we'll talk about that a little more. And when we, when we get to that, it's more, you know, it's on the expense side. So the city, the city makes up the difference between, or how that, you know, how this is determined, is that we say, okay, what is your program costs? What are you getting from state and federal sources or other sources? And they have, you know, some grants sometimes. And what's the difference? And that determines, that difference determines what the city's transfer is, and how much the city transfers. So, so when we talk about city transfers here, in terms of reducing them, we're talking about reducing expenses, reducing program, right? Program expenses, program budgets. And so even though this is going up, it's because budgets are up a little for various reasons, and that, so we'll, we'll have to get to that when we talk about expenses. But I want to, this is when I talk about transfers. Transfers are complex, because, yeah, it's a revenue here, but it's really driven by the expense on the other side, right? And, and how the city funds these things. So, that's, that, if we want to reduce the transfer amount, we have to look back to that. So this is all three of those. And they've gone from, you know, if you can see that the total cost over time has, has increased from about, you know, over 7 million to now over 12 million for this year. So it's been a, you know, there's both a lot of needs, there's more federal money coming in, and the programs have had some growth, and we've added, we're taking a little more cost for healthy families. So then the next, the next page, the next slide, shows these three services for their, again, for their own revenue budgets. And we have, you know, state and federal. And you can see the federal money is coming in for the social services fund. That's where all the federal money is. CSA and healthy families get state revenue. And then the city makes up the green, which is at the top. CSA has some user charges and some other monies they get periodically. We don't see much other there. So primarily, for let's say, social services, it's state and federal, city. For CSA, primarily state, and then city revenue is coming in with a few other revenues now and then, but we haven't seen any for a few years. And those have gone up, but they're fairly flat over the last couple of years. And then healthy families, that was, became a full city department in '23. So we're seeing, you know, we've seen a lot of growth as it relates to, you know, the cost that's being taken on by the city as we've kind of moved to stabilize. There's a few things that's, that healthy families is doing to reduce the city amount. They've actually come back, and so we'll see this, they have come back with a reduced budget, because we've asked them to do it. Did not make its way into this presentation, because we just recently got it, but that will reduce it back down a little, they've, they've cut back a lot. The other thing we've asked them to do is go out to partner agencies that they provide service for, and look at how much they're charging versus what value they're getting from the service to recover, do more of a cost recovery approach than a flat fee approach, which is kind of how we've done it, which could, you know, so we're, I want to make sure, I know you want to make sure that the city of Hopewell is not subsidizing, subsidizing any other city, especially ones that have a lot more money than we do. And that's, you know, that's not been the intent at all to do that. It's primarily a Hopewell program, but it does serve three other jurisdictions that are contiguous to us. And so that is in process, okay. So if we can go, yeah, to the debts, go one more. So, so debt service, and this is where I, and actually I realized when I was going through this earlier today with Dr. Manker, that I have a food and lodgings tax charts that did not make it in here. But we'll, it does, we'll, we'll talk about it a little. So the primary rev, there's three primary revenue sources that fund our debt service. One is food, food and lodging taxes. So that's a, those are general, that's a general fund revenue, but they're dedicated to debt service. So, and if you remember, I talked about, there's a transfer of debt service in here from the general fund, that's at the bottom of this, right? There's a general fund transfer. And then regional water and sewer, from their rates, pay for their debt, right? So there's debt both for the benefit of regional water and sewer separately. They pay for their debt through the rates. There's more general debt, and that's paid for through food and lodging taxes and general fund transfers. Food and lodging taxes are fairly small taxes overall, so if you, you know, I looked at increases of about a half percent on food and a percent on lodging, and that would bring in around $75,000 to $90,000 each. So it's not, they're not significant monies, but they are dedicated to debt service. They come in there to offset the cost of debt service. And again, once, once regional water has paid for their debt, sewer pays for their debt, you know, there's debt for the school debt, and there's some debt for general obligation bonds for the city. And so food and lodging pay some of that, and then the transfers for the city to pay the rest, whatever that is. So food and lodging goes down for some reason, the general fund, right? Money goes up. This is the, again, that whole game, or whatever you call it with the transfers, how, how the transfers work. Okay. Lastly, is schools, school funding. So I, I'm showing here 2018 through 2024, it looks like we went off for some reason for their... But we're, the school funding we're showing from '18 to '24, because we don't have the '25 budget yet, or an estimated budget. And I didn't want to just throw in last year's, because, but I, there's a couple of things I want to point out here. One is the consistency of what the city's put in over the years. And this is the total amount, not just the budgeted. Until this year, they've always come back and asked for more. And they did come back and ask for more this year, we said, sorry, we don't have it. And we're, and we said to them this year, here's, here's what we're planning on giving you, budget accordingly. And in there, you know, that's, that's a stressful time for them, because they have to wait pretty late to know what they're going to get. And again, last year till October. So the other monies that come in, there's money, different monies that might come in. Sometimes they, they have ARPA monies that are still coming in, those are, they don't, we don't budget for those, they're reimbursable. So if they spend money that's for those programs, they get the money back. Ah, well, thank you. And the other thing, I, I talked about this once before, and we're, we're doing some work, we, we meet with the, my office, the treasurer's office, and the schools meet once a month to talk about issues we're having, concerns we're having, things we need from them, things they want from us. And so it's, what's nice that both is developing a relationship and rapport, but it gives us time to say, hey, where is that thing you said you were going to give us? And that's been helpful, right? So we have, we've asked for things, and that, they're coming pretty quickly. Once we've asked for them, they're providing them. But one of the things that's outstanding is this, you see this little purple on the '24, this purple part of the bar at the top, is miscellaneous revenue slash carryover. So that's monies that they said, hey, we got this money, we got the money from the state for capital projects, and we haven't spent it. We got money from the state for the balanced school year, and we haven't spent all that. We're, we're tracking it. The problem is, we haven't tracked it. So one of the things we've said is, okay, we need to get together, and we're going to develop this. When you have something that you're getting money that you're not going to spend, you're going to carry over, we need to know that. And it's not, it's, it's not just calling me on the phone and saying, hey, we got this, because I'm not going to remember. It's getting the treasurer involved and other people from my office involved, so we can say, oh, you have that money, let's set up a fund. So when you get that specific money, we'll, we'll set that aside, and we'll invest it in LGIP or something else, right? So it's now, it's set aside, and it should be above and beyond, it should not, getting that extra money they carry over should not increase any of our cost. And so we're, that's something we're working on with them. This was going to be a point of, I don't know if it's going to be contention, it's something, it's a point of we're going to continue investigating. And we need to make sure if they have any carryover, that it's clearly documented, that it's not, you know, we're not double paying for something. I'm just putting it out there, because it's just a question mark in my mind. And we'll work through that. But, yeah, schools is never, never a dull moment with, with schools. Okay. So, I, I, I'm not going to go through all these. In your packet, right? What I, what I give you is this is the data that kind of mirrors the other, you know, the stuff we've gone over. So it's showing, like, these first table, which, which spans two pages, just because it's a big table, has a list of, you know, taxes, different fees and charges. If you go over, state and federal revenues, and then the types of other revenues, when we talk other, these are the types of other revenues we have. And then that's, that goes down for each fund, right? So these are, again, we've, enterprise funds are all enterprise funds, all three. Public services are all the health and human services, so there's some consolidation here, but it gives you more actual, actual numbers across the board. And then I have, again, the, more the, the actual number detail for general fund and all the other funds for the, for what we looked at. So I know some, some people really like graphs. I really like graphs for presentations, because it's a lot of information. But if you have a question, it's nice to have the numbers, right? To dig down into. So that's what this is to provide. As we move forward, I'll, I'll do a, I'm developing a similar type of presentation, which means I'm trying to take all the information we have and distill it in a way that focuses, you know, you on the issues that are coming up with your budget, and the policy, you know, concerns that are coming up. Because that's really where, you know, the council shines, is, you know, deciding policy of, of what goes on. We, we're continuing to update, we had meetings today to try to, you know, make sure we're understanding where there's been increases, why, is there any place to come down, is there any way to save money? And so we're going through that. So that's what we'll be talking about next week. So it's going to be marrying more of the expenses, and I'll definitely bring, I have to bring in the revenue when I start talking about expenses, because we've already talked about revenue, and, and that's where the rubber starts meeting the road. And there are a few big policy issues that you're going to have to consider, right? Of how, what do we do? And we'll, and we'll bring those forward for you. And then eventually, as we get, as we get direction and put the whole budget together, and everything, you'll have, you know, there'll be an opportunity to look at all the detail if you wish. I, you know, I do it because I get paid to do it, and I have to, you know? And I, I find it very fascinating for me, but I'll tell you, it takes a lot of time to really understand that book. And so if anybody, as we give you that, or if you have questions, I'm always open to, to answer questions, or if you say, hey, I really want to go through this, and what's the best way to approach it, be happy to do that with you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Branson, Counselor Pelham, and Vice Mayor Gore?
Well, I'd just like to first say thank you for a nice font, something you can read and understand better. But on page 34, when it talks about donations, what do we get donations for?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a misnomer, but it's what it's, it's what it's listed primarily, let me get there, because I want to see the total amount, because if I, if it's the total, I think it is...
It's $74,000.
Yeah, okay, so I know exactly what that is. That is not donations. It's just what it's listed as. And I should have, I should have changed it this, because I could have. It's, these are the charges for healthy families from the three communities that, that we, that they provide service for in addition to Hopewell. These are the ones where I've said, you need to, you know, we need to go back, I mean, Dr. Manker said this, hey, you need to go back, and we need to ask these people for more money. And, you know, they said, well, how do we do that? I said, okay, you serve 100 families, it's this cost, how about just dividing, how much per family is that? And then how many families do you serve in these different communities? And we say, look, we've charged you 25,000 or so, but we've served four families at 12,000 each, we need to increase to 48,000. Right? So that's what that is, that's what the...
The government, the government pays us to...
The government, yeah. We're providing services for their families, this is the government, not the families.
So we just need to change the nomenclature.
Yes, no, you're right.
Reimbursing something. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Gore, then Counselor Denton, and then myself.
Okay. I have a few questions, some will go to Mr. Branson, some will go to the city manager. In terms of outside agencies, I know that's coming up for us to discuss, I just want to get an idea on, are you sticking to the ones we approved last year, or are you adding some other ones back in?
So, that will be... That will be in the expense, because there's monies going out.
Right, so I said, we're not there yet, I'm trying to make sure.
Just, just the list, and, and as we go through them, if, if, if there's others, we can discuss that, but we're sticking to the same list.
Yeah, it's the same list and about the same amount, I don't think there's...
And about the same amount.
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's...
Last year, we cut which ones we were giving to, so that's what I'm saying, are you going back to two years ago or last year?
Last year.
Last year, okay. And then in terms of the schools, I mentioned the whole thing about the carryover not being an ongoing conversation, but you kind of need that number to know if our general fund contribution is going to be adjusted, correct?
Well, you know, I think here's, if we decide that yes, you have that mon, yes, we received money for you that you didn't spend, then it, it wouldn't be a general fund contribution, it would, it would be a reduction, it would be, yeah, look at our cash, it wouldn't be more general fund, it would be, oh, we should have saved that money aside for you.
Right, so, right, so I said it would be a reduction in general fund contribution.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Not necessarily, I mean, just like, and this is where the, the accounting and, on both sides, has not been good on the school stuff. For example, so they, they got, they've added six million, I don't think they've come yet though, have they?
No.
No, okay, so we, I'm going to call Janelle, because we've talked to her, she was supposed to come, and then I didn't follow up. So I'm going to, that's my, it's on me right now. But they have, they got an additional $6 million in grants. And I've asked her, how much of those do you think you're going to spend? Are there's things you're going to carry over? So we're, that's an ongoing conversation, because I do want to know that, this, they've given me backup for this, this other stuff, but it's like backup, like, here it is, right? It's more of a sheet. And I say, no, we need to see more. So we're doing more investigation to that. So it, it shouldn't, I'm sorry, I, I feel I'm rambling a little. It shouldn't increase or decrease, I don't think, our, our, our city contribution, but, so here's, okay, now my thoughts are clarifying here.
Why not?
Yeah. So the way the schools work, right, is, is they set a budget. They get so much state money and so much money from us that this budget is based on. If they spend more than that budget... than that budget, they, um, we would just pay their bills, right? We would pay them more than we said we're going to pay them, because they've taken. If they spend less than that budget, then we don't pay them as much as we said we're going to pay them. So it's like this, in, in, on the downward side, let's say it's self-correcting. If they spend less, we just don't pay it, because they've never run the bills through. If we pay more, we do pay it. They're, they are, and I've checked on this, they're really good about, uh, well, hold on. They've said, and what I've seen does not contradict that yet, that they're, that they're really good about spending their budget. What I, what I've seen from the past years and what I've seen from this year to date, what we have, they're a little behind in giving us their month-to-month billing, is that they, they are on track, right, for their budget. Now, the other thing that happened is we said, we're not going to give you the extra 1.4 million, which their budget was based on. So we're supposed, we should be seeing as we get into this, they should have reduced their spending coming out, right, from that. So all to say, it's really, it's a murky pool with the schools, because even though we say we give them money, we don't. They do not manage their own money. All that money goes through the city and we actually do not physically give them money, right? So we rely on them to hold their budget, right? They rely on us to pay their bills. As they come through, we pay their payroll and accounts payable. Um, and then if you have things like this come in, you know, frankly, what it does if the money comes in, they don't have the expense, but they should carry it over, the way we've treated is like, great, we don't, we got more money, we had to pay them less. Um, and then it just, and then we reset the next year, everything's zero. And what they're saying is, no, everything is not zero, right, from the past. We had money that was extra. There's not a clear path to understand all this. Now, I know that the, um, the UHY accountant CPA who's working for the schools through Jack's team is looking at that. Um, she's someone who I know and trust, and so hopefully she'll get down to the bottom of that for us as she goes, continues to go through the, uh, the audits. I, that's a very long answer to your question. I think it's very, um, you know, I think I understand schools. I don't think I've learned yet completely how to talk about school funding, um, because it's very, it's just, it, the way we talk about it, the way I heard about it, is not the way it works, right? The way our language has been about it is not the way it works, at least how I understood the language about it when I first came, is not the way it works.
All right. So I just need to get, when you get to that clarity and come talk to us about it.
Yes.
I would think if they have carryover, it would reduce our contribution. That's what I'm, I hear what you're saying. It still doesn't make sense, though. But then also, I know that there's conversation about this whole bu, uh, building fund, bus fund. We talked to you about that. We said we were not letting them keep it, and all of their leftover money that the city gave should come back to us at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, um, if there's any other conversations about that, it needs to come back to council.
There's a lot to unpack and we definitely will come back once we have clarity on it.
I have a few other questions, since we had to hold them. Um, in terms of the Beacon, um, that is one group I don't, I didn't see in here. I know.
I asked him about that as well.
Yeah, and.
I, where, where, what page are you looking at?
It's, it's an enterprise fund. I asked, but it's, comes under economic development.
No, Beacon's not an enterprise fund. We do.
No, it's not an enterprise fund.
We fund about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think it used to be a hundred and seventy, it's gone down to one fifty.
It falls under economic development, though. It falls under economic development.
Yeah, yeah, right.
No, it doesn't.
That's what we said.
Well, if I, wherever it falls.
Can I ask my question? Because everybody's talking. Let me ask my question. Thank you. So, the Beacon Theater.
Yeah.
Historically, um, we just add them in our budget and we give them a contribution of money. And so they have to provide their own separate financials during the audit time. And what I've been asking, you know, all this year is, hey, what is council going to do about the whole LLC, et cetera, et cetera, and what are we going to do for accountability for their, with their financials? I didn't expect to see it in the revenue side, because it's not a part of this conversation.
Right.
But I do want to know what we're, because, because it's not an outside agency. It wasn't discussed like that last year. What are we doing regarding that in terms of, um, what they're projecting to be, and I know it's going to be an expenditure conversation, but I still want to know what you're thinking, because in case we come back, I don't want to have, like, wait to have more information.
Yeah, I, well, and I'll, honestly, I haven't thought a lot about the Beacon yet, but I know, I believe it's a hu, at a hundred and fifty thousand in the draft budget. And so I think is, and I, I, I don't know, yeah, I'll have to look and see where it's coming out of, but, um, it's definitely could be a part of the conversation next week. We'd be ready to talk about that a little bit. But you're, you're, you're saying, if they're not giving us what we need for transparency, what do we do about?
Correct. And that's been my argument this entire time. Like, we keep funding them and then they hold, also contribute to the audits being held up, because they can't get their financials together.
And I'll check back with Jack Reagan, um, because that's, that, there's a part of that. I know they've looked into it. I just don't know the answer to that right now.
All right. And then my other question is, uh, in terms of Parks and Recreation, historically, what we were told council has been, the reason why they're separate, and I know they're, we know now that they're not separate. I get it. But I'm using historical verbiage. We were told they were a separate enterprise, because they collect money. Well, development code enforcement, they collect money as well.
Police.
Police collects money as well. So I'm just trying to make sure that, um, we talked about, um, with the treasurer's office, MOU, et cetera, when you move them over, even though they're not over, you know, I'm trying to say, is the, is the accounting part lined up, so when they get their membership and user fees, they know where to put them?
Um, yes. And so one of the, I was going to do it, I, and I was going to make this change this year. And then as I got into it, we're into budget, it's just, there's a lot, because to follow, to do all that, because we do have to change all their account codes, and that has to be changed in the treasurer's office. So when the money comes in, it's getting put in the right place for their, you know, for their, but they get credit for the monies they bring in. So yes, that's why we said, no, not, we have too much going on right now. We're not going to do that now. Um, but it will be done in the next, before the next budget season starts.
So how are they going to collect it now? Like, the same way?
Yeah, it's, it's collected the same way. Just when it comes in, it'll be coded to their department. So it'll be general fund money, but coded to their department, so you can see how much money they brought in from their services.
All right. My last two question. Um, in terms of debt service, when you talked about the debt slide, um, is there anything that's coming off, or are you going to talk about that in expenditure side, terms of debt service that's dropped off, that we could use as potential revenue? That's what I'm asking.
Not this next year, but in about a year or two, there's some drops, drops. I'll take a, I'll take a look at that in terms of what year. I can't remember if it was, but it could be twenty-six, twenty-six or twenty-seven. There's some debt dropping off. Um, there's debt dropping off on the school side, I know. It's a, you know, it's a significant piece.
Okay. My last question is to City Manager. When we voted to adjust our, um, budget calendar, I asked for the motion to include, I'm talking about council priorities, but it's not a part of today's discussion. Um, you know, how are we going to propose, how are you proposing that we adjust it? Because the retreat didn't turn into a retreat. And then we didn't end up talking about our, our priorities in terms of what to give you guidance on, to figure out what staff needs to prioritize in the budget. And I know we don't have a lot of money to play with, but, um, I do think that we still need to have that conversation. It would be helpful. Um, so when do you propose that we do that?
You, I propose that you consider your priorities or to have your discussion regarding your priorities at, after the expenditure.
Okay.
Or along with the department's discussion, because at that point, you'll have, um, you'll know what some of the requests are, and you can add that in with your priorities, um, as well.
That's going to be hard to do, because departments take the entire time. So we need to go back through and still like cold count, like do like the interactive activity to help put all the ideas on the table and, and narrow those down. Um, I just say, we need to see that. Unless council is un, under, of the understanding that this budget cycle, we're not going to try to ask for anything outside of what staff is asking, then it's fine. But just for your, for you, because you need to know that information as well, especially due to y'all having a retreat, it might be helpful. But if, if that's what council wants to, then we don't want people coming back at the end, when this is all adopted.
Right.
Or on the path to being adopted, say, well, we don't have this project, or we should be investing in this or that, and causing a monkey wrench.
So, so it was my plans to share the retreat outcomes with council, um, tomorrow in the, uh, regular report. And then that way you can start generating conversations around, um, around what you see. Um, there's not a lot of budget, there's not a lot of wiggle room here. It's 4.2 million dollars in revenue. There are about 2 million of that is required. Uh, and so we're looking at an operation budget of just a little less than 2 million dollars for departments. So, you know, any other additional priorities, we'll have to take some things off the table.
As long as everybody understands that. Because again, I don't want anybody to come later on and ask, when, when do we do this? So just want to make sure we're clear. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Denton, myself, Pelham, Holloway, and then Joyner.
Um, I know you couldn't get over every, all the revenue coming in, but, uh, we've had it termed, um, the interstate out there, the million dollar mile. They get fines from that and they say we, it comes to the city. Is that shown in this at all, through revenue?
Yeah, and that's, I think it's, it's probably fines and forfeitures.
Is it going to be a million dollars to you?
Oh, you know what? I don't remember the exact number, but they, I know they do, you know, yeah, there's, there's revenue that's collected from fines that are on the, um, on 295.
So that will be, now the Beacon, is that showing any type of revenue? We haven't seen a financial.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't get any revenue from it.
We don't get revenue.
We pay, we pay.
We, I know we pay. But I just wondered, are you getting financial reports from them?
I have not seen a financial report.
They, they are receiving, Jack and his team is, they're receiving financial reports regularly from the Beacon.
That's where I said, I'll, I'll check with Jack on that for next week. Yeah.
They have started submitting reports.
We haven't had a report, just didn't know if we were coming, you know, that, they seem to be very busy. And if the revenue is coming in, is that something we could look to, the revenue?
You have to look at the agreement. I'm not sure if we, the agreement includes any revenue for us.
That's why we need to get the LC dissolved. We can't do that. That's why it's separate.
Yeah.
Wishful thinking.
Okay. So you can take a break for a bit, because this question's actually for the Commissioner of Revenue staff. So drink some water. Uh, Ms. Reason or Ms. Kidd, um, on the machinery and tools tab, uh, it shows, um, you know, an increase in about 1.3, um, excuse me, it just shows an, an increase in, um, revenue from fiscal year 24, 25. Um, is this, uh, due to the, uh, current expansion and the massive capital upgrades down at Virginia American Water?
Can you come to the mic?
Yeah, can you come to the mic?
Good evening, everyone. Some of it's due to that, and then some of it is for Ashland Incorporated. Some of it is from West Rock, from their expansions.
Okay.
That's still included and coming up.
Okay, got you.
Because the, um, enterprise monies is going down, the revenue goes up.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see. Uh, Mr. Branson, um, on slide 23, it showed, um, user charges in fiscal year 24 to 25, you know, seeing a significant bump up. What is resulting from that bump up right there?
Yeah, the result, the result, that result is, um, that I included, um, a charge for 9.2 million dollars of anticipated capital.
Okay, so that's the.
That includes a capital charge, yeah.
Okay.
Which may or may not be added in, so it's still for discussion.
Okay, got you. Okay. And then, um, on the stormwater side, um, I'm sorry. Oh, uh, stormwater's on 24. Um, we talked a little bit and saw projections of what different rate increases and things like that would look like. Um, do you have any numbers or, um, do you think you could get some numbers from Public Works to see what, um, stormwater revenue would look like, uh, for like a one, two, or three dollar increase?
Um, yeah, I could do that.
Because if, you know, the majority of our big capital projects are coming from those infrastructure ones, that, you know, I think it would be a good idea, you know, we, you know, at least look and consider that.
I think, I know the capital need there is greater than the revenue.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, um, the next one, uh, I, I think this would end up, this is going to end up going over to Public Works as well for an analysis. Uh, but the stormwater commercial accounts are based off of a, 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 a set area that they charge the rate to. And so, um, I wanted to see if they could run an analysis also for us on what it would be like if they shrunk the area by like 100, 150, and 200 square feet, because then that would end up, uh, increasing, uh, revenue on that side.
Run that by me again. Say that again.
So, um, commercial accounts.
Yes.
For stormwater fee is based off of a, a square footage.
Okay.
So residential, we each pay the $4 a month.
Okay.
Commercial does an area, their impervious surface area divided by this set area, and I think it's 1,600 square feet.
Okay.
But if we did, change that number to like 1,500 or 1,400, it would result in more revenue being able to come in. Um, so I just want to just know what that analysis would look like. And then, um, I know we had discussion about it last year, uh, on how much money, uh, we could end up generating, just in cost savings, if we moved the stormwater fee from the monthly utility fee and then adding it to the six-month, um, real estate taxes.
Hmm.
And then what that would do in terms of like collection and then savings that we may have on the data integrator, uh, data integrators contract until that gets resolved.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I like, that's it. I like that one.
And then, all right, yeah. And those are it. And I can type those two for you to.
I, I think, I think Dr. Makler may have taken notes. Do you have notes on those?
Okay.
Yeah, she's taking notes. Okay, that'd be great. If you, if you could send, uh, you follow me, that'd be great, yeah.
Okay. Um, Counselor Pelham, Holloway, and then Joyner.
I must, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. Uh, Counselor Holloway?
I'm not, I'm not sure if, uh, if I had understood Vice Mayor's questions about the school or something, but I did hear Ms., uh, Counsel, excuse me, Counselor Pelham comment about the questions with the school. If I remember correctly, the school had, uh, the superintendent had came to us and explained to us the extra, um, funds that they had come in weren't necessarily, um, funds that replaced the things that they necessarily used, I mean, uh, that they requested funds from us for.
Right.
But rather, they were receiving extra funds due to like COVID things. Um, for instance, there were some teachers taking on mentoring programs and they had to pay them extra for that, so forth and so on. Um, because, uh, Counselor Pelham had asked about that. But, uh, the other thing was, the, I thought we had agreed, when it came to the Beacon Theater, one, we had reduced the amount. I don't know why I thought it was more than by 20,000 dollars, but.
Yeah, we did go from 170 to 150.
Right, but I, I thought it was more than that. I have to go look back, but I thought it was like 5,000 per year until they.
I think we had a stipulation on there that they only got the money if they were submitting financial reports.
Right. It was like, they would bring it in, um, as they would, uh, for, for every year. I forgot what the amount was, but it was like several thousand dollars per year that they were turning in their information. And if they did not, I thought we wouldn't fund them after that. And I have to go back and look, but I, I wanted to get some clarification on that, because I thought we had came up.
Have a schedule. Who said it was in halves?
It was, so the schedule was, you're, you're correct. It, the schedule was in halves. That's what it, we ultimately agreed to. But they were required to start providing their financial records to, um, the auditors, um, in which they started immediately. So believe it or not, in December, they had majority of their auditing records to.
So did we still give them that entire amount of money? Because I thought they weren't.
We have not. They received it in half. So in December, they received the half, which was 75.
But that's not the stipulation I thought. That's what I was trying to get clarification. I thought we had agreed upon if, um, given them, so say for instance, we're giving them 150 and it's divided by. and it's divided about a five years. I thought we said we would give them for every year that they turned in. That's how we were giving them the money. I, I, I thought for certain.
I'm sorry, I, I don't remember, remember that stipulation. That, but nevertheless, they are caught up with the, their financials that were required to be submitted.
Perfect. Excellent.
So.
Can we get an overview?
Yeah.
Is it possible we can give an overview about where they are? From Jack?
Yeah, I can request that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That was my only, um, questions and concerns.
Okay. Uh, councillor Joyner?
My, my question had to do with the Beacon as well. So, um, I'd just like to see the audited statements. We haven't seen the financials.
Can't hear you.
We have not seen the financials. I was not aware.
Yeah, it was supposed to be.
We've not seen anything. Pardon?
We haven't seen anything, so we need to see.
This is good news, I'm glad. That's great.
He, he hasn't complained. I think he, he said that he had received their information from, from their request, his request from them.
Okay.
Just share with us.
Thank you very much. Um, this was a great presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
I do have two other questions, sorry. Actually, like budget time, so, um, in terms of the school's financial system, um, I think it was councillor Randolph that, I think it was councillor Pelham that requested the schools move over to our, to Munis.
Oh, yes.
And we gave 300,000 and then one day, um, one, I, I wasn't present for this council meeting, but they gave it back to the city. Um, yeah. So is there any update on where they are with getting into Munis?
Yeah, they, they plan to, um, switch over to Munis in July of '25. So a year from this July.
And what's the reason why? Because that was a year ago we gave them the money.
Yeah, when they, when we talked to them, they just, it's, you know, it's a, I'll say, switchovers are big deals. And they've been dealing with, um, stuff like the, you know, implementing the balance calendar and those kinds of things. And they, their staff is low. And this is the, but they said they're, you know, in terms of, they're not going to do it this July. They need to do it, they, you know, it's really helpful to do it at the start of fiscal year for a lot of reasons for them. And then, um, and they just didn't feel ready for this, this year. So they're on, their, their plan is to do it July of '25.
It's coun, I mean, this council support asking the manager to get Dr. Hackney to give us like a written reason as to why they cannot switch over sooner.
Absolutely.
Because it takes a long time.
So, so it's to my understanding, they're, they are in implementation phase. This is not a two, three month implementation. They have the bill chart of accounts. Um, there's other factors to play.
The words when you say implementation, instead of start over, the way I understood this thing.
They didn't start it at the time you, you think they started, okay? They, I, I think they started sometime mid last year. So, fast forward, you're looking at a, at least a year, um, from the time that they.
Did you guys know they were even starting?
Right.
Well, can we just have a timeline of where they?
I, I can ask for a timeline, sure.
Timeline from last year to going forward to the implementation next year.
So.
All we need is a timeline.
So, so for clarification, Madam City, uh, I was saying Attorney Manager. All right, so are you saying that, um, they have started, basically the process is just in order for it to, uh, be live or become active? It's ta, it's going to take until?
Yeah, that's my understanding. They've started the process, but they're not going to, their go-live date, their cut-over date would be July 1 of '25.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I tell you guys, they weren't going to start the process to go until July 25.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's, that's the cut-over date, yeah. That'd be the go-live date for it.
Okay, all right. Thank you guys for understanding. Um, and then for, um, Dr. Makler knows the name of the software, uh, council supported, I asked for ClearGov.
It's open finance.
Open finance system, um, for that citizens to be able to check the financial numbers in real time. I talked to you briefly about it at the retreat, but I didn't circle back. But I did ask Dr. Makler, and she said that they did implement, well, when she was IT Director, that she did work on that, but there still needs to have some of the, I guess, the correct numbers we upload into the system. So would we be able to have for this budget once adopted?
It's not the correct numbers that need to be, so the system is live.
Yes, yes, I see.
It's not, it's not citizen-facing, okay? Because the numbers that are in Munis are, are not displaying the correct information, okay? And that is because the cleanup has not occurred. And as we complete each audit, it'll get cleaner and cleaner. So the, the information automatically pulls. There's nothing that we physically have to enter into the system. It's all connected, it's all working. It's just not producing the correct information as we know it.
But doesn't it have a feature to show just the budget?
The, I'm, I'm sorry.
Doesn't it have a feature just to show the budget?
Yes, now, that's the feature that we, we upload.
Right.
Based on what we bill manually. Yes, it does.
So that, because I, that does seem to be live on the website.
And that's live today.
Okay. So it won't be until the audits are caught up when the other features are going to be live?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That answers your question.
Thank you.
So, so June 24th, when we see Jack progression towards cleaning up, those numbers, those numbers should correct themselves.
Two years, so I, we got at least a budget in the system. That's, that's, that's a plus. We'll wait for July, get the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, presentation phenomenon.
All right. Are there any other comments from city council questions?
I'll make a motion, we can be adjourned.
And thank you for, uh, joining us, uh, on the Revenue's Office as well.
Motions to adjourn? Is there any discussion? Or no discussion, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did, but I, I, I'm, my comment is, I'm going to thank for the presentation too. And, uh, and, uh, I, uh, I can appreciate the time that we spent tonight. Uh, I, I, I have, I don't have a question, but, um, I have, I have a concern about, um, in regards to the, our meeting being an open session and, uh, and individual comments that I receive from, uh, citizens, okay? And how, 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 how are we communicating with that? How are we communicating with the citizens along that line in regards to what questions they have about this budget process?
So, I think, I think the question is, he wants to know, how can citizens participate and provide comments? And so the, two ways. One, they can reach out to the clerk. But the second way, they're on the website, under the Finance Department, that you can, no, I'm sorry. Under the Clerk's page, you can always submit your comments for any, um, council meeting that we have. Um, citizens can always submit a comment there. They can ask questions there or they can just make comments. And the clerk is responsible for reading those comments that she received, uh, from the website into the record once she receives them.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All, uh, we got the motion on the floor to adjourn.